Good evening, everyone. I'm Majority Leader James Sanchez. And my colleagues to my right, I have Councilwoman Winch, Councilwoman Rosado to the far right, and to my left Minority Leader, Councilwoman with at least Bermudez, and Councilwoman Fox. Thank you for attending. And I also have Councilman Dr. Deutsch, who just arrived. Public hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the following procedures. Each person wishing to address the council or committee thereof shall, upon recognition by the presiding officer, give his or her name, address, and if he or she represents a group, shall in addition state for the record the name and the address of said group or organization. Shall limit his or her remarks to two minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. In other words, you cannot address any one singular person here. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith barred by the presiding officer from further audience at said meeting unless permission to remain is granted by two-thirds vote of the council members present and voting. During the public hearing, there shall be no debate by the council, although questions may be asked by the council of persons making such presentation. Presiding Officer asked three times if anyone's speaking in favor of or against of an item. Thank you. So because we have students here, I will be moving item number two in place of one. Is anyone here here speaking in favor of item number two? Ordinance amending Chapter 4, Section 17-87-101 of the Hartford Municipal Goal. Is anyone here in favor of item number two? Come on up. What's your name and your address?
Hi, my name is Alicia Oates. I go to Hartford, I go to Achievement First Hartford Summit from Hartford, Connecticut. I'm here. I'm here advocating for myself and other young people targeted by tobacco products. I'm trying to raise the age of sale. So you have to be 21 or older to purchase tobacco products. I'm trying to do this because young people, young people as in like 18-year-olds, they're purchasing tobacco and giving them to even younger people like 16, 14, and those people are those people, they're they're smoking while they're young and it can harm them when they get older so they can have like lung cancer and stuff like that. Health problems. I'm here. I'm here trying, I'm here trying to raise the the age of purchasing to 21. Also due to me having me having other family members that also are in the hospital right now because they have lung cancer due to smoking. So trying to put an end to that.
Thank you for coming and thank you for supporting and thank you for being part of the process.
Thank you.
Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here for item number two?
Good evening. My name's Evelyn Levesque. I'm from Newington, Connecticut. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight about why it is time for Hartford to raise the minimum age for tobacco sales to 21. I'm 16 years old and I'm a volunteer for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. We have come a long way in our fight against tobacco over the years, but that does not mean our work is done. That does not mean that tobacco has stopped its devastating toll in our communities. Raising the tobacco sale age to 21 will save lives by preventing more of our young people from becoming addicted at an young age. The youth, we are the ones this policy impacts. We are the ones the tobacco industries view as the replacement smokers. But I will not be a replacement. I am a junior and I'm right about the age where we are offered tobacco products and pressured into using them by people who are old enough to buy them. And sadly, a majority of us give in. I have a friend who is 15. Her sister graduated last year and her sister bought her a Juul. A Juul is a type of e-cigarette that uses nicotine salts that exist in leaf-based tobacco for its key ingredient. At 15 years old, she is already addicted to smoking. She is not mature enough to realize that she is ruining her life. Her oldest sister bought and supplied her with a way to ruin her life and that's not okay. I support Tobacco 21 because 10 years ago, I lost my grandfather to lung cancer. If he had never started smoking at an early age, he would still be around to watch me grow up, be at my dance recitals, watch me perform, maybe see me get married, and tobacco took that away. My father Roger Levesque was peer pressured into smoking in high school and at the age of 14, he was pressured into smoking by people who were old enough to buy tobacco. I thank God every day that he quit or else he wouldn't have been here today. And this probably would have been about him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Trevor Rogers and I'm from Southington, Connecticut. And I'm a volunteer with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I am a student at the Hartford branch of the University of Connecticut and I'm here to ask you to vote yes on Tobacco 21. 95% of adult smokers begin smoking before they turn 21 and a study by the Institute of Medicine predicted that raising the minimum age of sale of tobacco products from 18 to 21 could decrease the prevalence of smoking by 12%. I've been a student in Hartford since 2011 and have seen firsthand how many students are using tobacco products. Whether they're of age and buy products themselves or have an older student buy tobacco products for them, your students are using tobacco products. This is, this issue is more important today than ever before because of the increasing popularity of e-cigarettes, vapes, and Juuls that are specifically marketed at young people. The State Department of Public Health reported the number of high schoolers using electronic nicotine delivery systems has doubled since 2015. Now, 1 in 5 high school seniors report vaping. This is unacceptable. Tobacco is the, is the cause of 1/3 of all cancer-related deaths and by passing this ordinance, you can potentially save thousands of lives by protecting the young people in Hartford from the tobacco industry. You need to listen to the youth of Hartford who are here to tell you that they do not want to be a part of the replacement generation of smokers. You represent us and we want this ordinance passed. As of September 2018, 6 states and at least 350 localities have raised the tobacco age to 21 and I'm asking you to vote yes to this ordinance and set an example for the rest of Connecticut that this is a fight that we will not lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here in favor of item number two? Come up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dave Picas. I'm the President of SCIU 1199, New England. We represent 26,000 healthcare workers in the state of Connecticut. Over 3,000 of them live in Hartford. And I'm here tonight to express my union's strong support for raising the minimum legal age to 21 for the sale of all tobacco products. The American Cancer Society, the American Heart Association, the American Lung Association, the American Medical Association, lots of American associations, among dozens of other public health organizations endorse a legal age of 21. As a labor union that represents healthcare workers, we believe that the evidence to support this change proves without a doubt that smoking causes serious health concerns. We know, just as I'm sure you do, that there is no such thing as a safe cigarette. The U.S. Center for Disease Control says nicotine is more addictive than heroin and cocaine. Individuals who begin smoking at a young age are more likely to become addicted, progress to daily smoking, become heavier tobacco users as adults, have difficult quitting, and get emphysema at greater rates. Because of this, it's also crucial that we push for the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and prohibit the promotion and sale of electronic nicotine delivery systems to youth and increase tobacco product prices to reduce youth tobacco use. 90% of smokers start smoking before age 21 and many people who purchase for distribution to minors are still in high school and are between the ages of 18 and 20. Personally, I was one of those 90%. I smoked for over 20 years, starting at age 15. At a certain point, I tried quitting every Sunday night for probably 15 years. And I finally succeeded more than 30 years ago. But there's no doubt in my mind that smoking would be less rampant if access to these products was limited. A good place to start is with this initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here in favor of item number two?
Hello, my name is Akilia Crawford and I'm in 7th grade and I attend Martin Luther King Social Justice Middle. I wish to advocate for the cause of raising ages to buy tobacco. Children are allowed to purchase tobacco products at 18, but they can sell or give them to younger students at their high schools. This issue is important to me because I have a friend who is 15, which means they're younger than 18. They are supplied with nicotine and tobacco by by older people at their school. It's very important for them to know that they're putting themselves in danger. It is important for people to know and understand that smoking tobacco is killing teens. I'm advocating for teens because teens are being impacted by this. Big tobacco companies would be against this because they're the ones who sell tobacco products and by advocating for this cause, I'm helping to shut them down. I advocate by learning about tobacco and its effects and telling people to help them stop smoking.
Thank you. Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here in favor of item number two?
My name is Seth Lapik from Granby, Connecticut. I'm here representing Connecticut Children's Medical Center and the American Heart Association. I'd like to thank the Court of Common Counsel in the City of Hartford on behalf of the American Heart Association and Connecticut Children's allowing us to present this to you. I'm a pediatric cardiologist at Connecticut Children's Medical Center and Associate Clinical Professor of Pediatricity at the University of Connecticut and current Board Member of the Founder's Affiliated of the American Heart Association. But most importantly, I'm a citizen of the state of Connecticut. Tobacco was not just a professional concern for me. This is a personal issue as well. Both of my parents began smoking in their early teens. At that time, we didn't have the information we do today regarding the devastating health effects and costs of tobacco use and addiction. Of course, we now have this information some 40 years plus later, but due to the savvy tobacco advertising and tobacco company greed, smoking addiction is still an enormous health issue and we all pay the cost. I watched my father's quality of life deteriorate significantly over the last 30 years of his life as a result of a lifelong addiction to smoking. He tried numerous times from about the age of 40 onward to break the habit unsuccessfully. He was unable to quit even with all of the available smoking cessation aids. He tried them all. His smoking caused him to develop debilitating chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and bladder cancer. Both of these severely impacted his later life, limiting his activity at best to a brisk walk. I now watch my mother suffering through extreme shortness of breath secondary to tobacco-related COPD. She was able to quit 30 years ago, but the lung issues still persist. There's strong data that if a person does not begin smoking by age 18, they virtually never will. You heard the statistics from people much more eloquent than myself. This may be, this might be because of immature brain is more susceptible to the effects of nicotine or immature decision-making capabilities, impulse control, or susceptibility to advertising and peer pressure. Of course, the tobacco companies take full advantage of this, of these developmental immaturities. Given that upwards of 80% of youth smokers plus will continue smoking well into adulthood, the obvious time to intervene would be in adolescence. The current legal tobacco purchase age of 18 years of age is inadequate. Most smokers below the age of 18 obtain their cigarettes from their 18 to 21-year-old peers and 90% of those who provide cigarettes to the youngest teens are under the age of 21. Tobacco still remains the number one preventable cause of early coronary artery disease in adults. It's caused for chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, lung cancer, bladder cancer, and the disease list goes on and on. Aside from the devastating impact of the disease we have on individuals and families, as we've heard from the students, the social cost in treating these patients is enormous. The annual healthcare costs to Connecticut directly related to smoking is over $2 billion. The Medicaid costs alone are over a half a billion dollars. That's in Connecticut. The smoking, the smoking caused productivity loss in Connecticut is between 1.2, estimated about $1.2 billion annually. One could argue that minimal loss of tax revenue that the city might incur from raising the smoking age might be unacceptable to our state's current fiscal situation. But as a Connecticut taxpayer, I believe this is the height of foolishness to let this argument stand. The ultimate financial cost to the state and the city of these children, young adults becoming addicted dwarfs any argument against. Finally, I believe e-cigarettes, which fall under the Food and Drug Administration Regulatory Authority but can be affected by your decisions, should also be regulated for the reasons that have already been enumerated here. The nicotine delivery from these things is tremendous. The majority of my day is treating patients with relatively rare congenital heart disease. Although this is an important and appropriate, and appropriate, the health impact of my work at a population and societal level is trivial compared to the effects we can have in the town, the city of Hartford, the state of Connecticut, and the USA on health of all our citizens by implementing any and all of strategies to decrease tobacco use that are at our, that are available to us. I respectfully request your support for this very important legislation. Thank you.
Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here in favor of item number two? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Mary Stewart. I actually live in Massachusetts, but I work for Trinity Health St. Francis. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about my support for this legislation. As a public health professional in a clinical setting, I'm very, I'm very excited to be a part of this kind of massive change that can take place to support people's health. I'm also excited to be a part of the advocacy group with teens who really care a lot about this issue. I'd like to just list a few things that we know about Tobacco 21 and smoking. We know that smoking leads to poor health outcomes. We know that most smokers start at age less than 18. We know that tobacco companies target minority populations and Hartford is a majority-minority city. We know that most smokers want to quit. We know that behavior change is very, very hard, particularly related to addiction. We know that tobacco leads to early death and we know that there's tremendous expense related to tobacco-related disease. So I strongly urge you to support this legislation.
Thank you. Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here in favor of item number two?
My name is Viola Haldane and I'm a resident of the city of Hartford. I'm going to talk about this from personal experience. My sister-in-law died from lung cancer at the age of 50. She started smoking when she was in high school and when she died, she was a single parent and she left behind four kids. Two were in high school and her oldest son, who was 22 at the time, took on the responsibility of raising the family. His youngest sibling was maybe a sophomore in high school. Even though she got diagnosed when she was stage 4 lung cancer, her son, who watched her die, is a smoker. He started smoking when he was maybe 14, 15. He was in the house with a smoker and people knew he was smoking and even as he watched her die, he could not stop smoking even though he tried. So the loss of her life kind of destroyed the family because a 22-year-old, 23-year-old to be responsible for three younger siblings is a big responsibility. And that has changed that whole family dynamic and that whole family. My son started smoking, I don't know when. He was in high school. He knows I am very much against smoking. It's not allowed in my house and my car. He has tried to stop, or maybe not, but his newest declaration to me a couple weeks ago was, "I now use Juul. I now use these e-cigarettes and they're better than smoking a cigarette because it doesn't smell." In his mind, the transition from a cigarette to an e-cigarette is an improvement. Smoking is highly addictive and people try to change. But sometimes they don't have the strength. Sometimes it takes a long time. And almost everyone that I know that smokes started before they were 18. They were not able to buy the product, but it was given to them. So I am asking your support that we raise the age to 21 in hopes that younger people, younger than 18, younger than maybe even 20, will not have as much access to it and hopefully we can save lives and save families and change families. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number 20, 2? Is anyone here in favor of item number two?
Good evening. My name is Jim Williams. I'm the Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association. I live in Newington, Connecticut. My father, my grandfather, and my grandmother all passed away from smoking-related disease. They all started before they were 18. I'm also a Marine Corps veteran who spent eight years overseas. I can attest to the generosity of the tobacco industry who routinely gave us free products while we were deployed overseas. Unfortunately, many of the young men that I served with who at the time were 18, 19, 20 years old today have tobacco-related disease. Serving your country should not result in a lifetime of addiction. Most importantly to me, I'm also a father. I have two young boys who are ages 10 and 12 and I want to help to make it as difficult as possible for them to have access to these products. I want to leave you just with a single statistic that I think is very relevant this evening. Today, there are 56,000 kids in the state of Connecticut currently under the age of 18 who will eventually die from their own tobacco use. I applaud this council for considering this proposed ordinance and I hope that we can count on your support. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your service. Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number 20, number two? Is anyone here against number two? Is anyone here in favor of item number two?
Good evening. My name is Bright Johnson. I'm the State Director of Government Relations for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. We are in strong support of this ordinance. We have, we will be submitting a longer testimony in written form after the hearing, but I wanted to commend this council for the leadership you're showing by taking up this ordinance and hopefully doing something that's going to have a massively positive impact on the health of our youth. Jim Williams just mentioned this statistic about the 56,000 kids today that will die prematurely from tobacco use. That is the target. That's who we're trying to impact and that's who you're going to help by passing this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here in favor of item number two? Is anyone here in favor?
Good evening. My name is Ruth Knobi. I am the Director of Advocacy for the American Lung Association in Connecticut. Thank you for the opportunity to express our support of increasing the tobacco sales age to 21 within the city of Hartford. You've heard a lot of statistics tonight and a lot of stories and we really appreciate your time. So I did want to just really thank you for your leadership. We think that this can have a really great impact on the youth of Connecticut and will, you know, cause other cities and towns in the state to follow suit because we really want to protect the youth throughout the state of Connecticut. There are six other states around the country who have passed this ordinance and there's over 350 municipalities that have done this as well. But Hartford would be the first. So we really appreciate your time and the Lung Association supports this initiative. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here in favor of item number two?
Good evening. My name is Shannon Quinby and I'm with the Preventing Tobacco Addiction Foundation. I'm based in Washington, DC. My organization works nationwide on a single policy, Tobacco 21. We work to raise the minimum legal sales age for all tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, to 21. I am honored to be here tonight in support of this policy, the first local Tobacco 21 policy being considered, introduced here in the state of Connecticut, right here in Hartford. I have had the privilege of working with health organizations here, city officials, elected officials over the past many months on this bill and I commend all of them for their hard work, their courage, and their commitment to protecting the youth in this beautiful city. I will submit a longer written statement on behalf of my organization after the hearing. But tonight, I just wanted to stand up and say thank you for your consideration of and support of this very important bill for Hartford and Hartford youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here against item number two? Is anyone here in favor of item number two?
Good evening. My name's Ken Farbstein. I'm the, I work with the Dietex Foundation Network for the Improvement of Addiction Treatment in Needham, Massachusetts. Needham was the first town in the whole US to adopt Tobacco 21 back in 2005. My 22-year-old daughter is very adventurous and experimented with just about everything else, but she's not addicted to tobacco because she couldn't buy that in our town. Tobacco sellers, and you may hear this over the next week, that tobacco sellers sometimes claim that they'll lose lots of money from Tobacco 21. But look at the evidence from the first four towns in the United States to adopt Tobacco 21. Needham, Sharon, Massachusetts, Canton, Massachusetts, and Dedham, Massachusetts. I have letters from the town officials from those towns saying that no tobacco retailers went out of business because of saying that no tobacco retailers went out of business because of, because of Tobacco 21. If I can share that with the council, please. So tobacco retailers make their money off of customers who are already addicted. Tobacco 21 will reduce the future use by today's teens, but it won't measurably reduce tobacco sales to current customers. So most smokers, 75% of them, according to the Centers for Disease Control, support Tobacco 21, as do most non-smokers. That's why, when I was at a fair at the Berry Square Community Day earlier this summer, it was easy to get 58 letters of support for Tobacco 21 from Hartford voters, just in that one afternoon, in that one place. Here are, here are the letters. Some are from smokers, some from non-smokers, some from never smokers as well. So we're all aware of the problems that vapes and e-cigs and all these products have become. The head of the Food and Drug Administration, Dr. Scott Gottlieb, said last month, quote, "It's an epidemic, a dangerous trend among teens," unquote, in calling out the, quote, "disturbing and accelerating trajectory of youths we're seeing in youth and the resulting path to addiction. The youth risk is paramount," unquote. And in April, he stated, "The nicotine in these products can rewire an adolescent's brain, leading to years of addiction." So even if some people say, "Well, the e-cigs or vapes or whatever, the Juuls help smokers, smokers to cut down and quit," that's completely irrelevant. Our goal is to have youth never start and never get addicted in the first place. So even with Tobacco 21, smokers my age can try using vapes or e-cigs or whatever to stop smoking. Good luck to them. They're adults. They're free to choose. But we can't sacrifice our kids. And we have to do all that we can so these products don't addict a new generation of our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here against item number two? Is there anyone here in favor of item number two? Is there anyone here in favor of item number two? Is there anyone here in favor of item number two? So now that everyone spoke on item number two, this item's been referred to the Health and Human Services Committee. And that committee is held on the first Monday of each month at 5:30 PM here in the council chambers. Except for holidays and special dates. Yes, there will be a vote next Monday on this. I'd like to thank our Councilman, Dr. Deutsch, for being the author of this ordinance. And I'd like to thank the council for, for supporting the ordinance. Thank you for attending for this item. Councilman Deutsch?
I, I, I think most of the thanks, all of it, really goes to those who came tonight. And especially to the students, who know better than some of us do these consequences, and see their peers, and are advising them. I especially appreciate the young people who, who face this forwardly and have come speak out on it. And also, all the associations that have come out. They did most of the work, really. And also, the media. The media deserves immense thanks because it shares the experience that everyone have, whether it's in a high school bathroom, or on the street, or in a store. And they'll be very helpful in educating all of us as the time goes by. So the thanks really go to everyone else here. And we just respond to it, I think. So, thank you all.
Councilwoman?
Yes, as a member of the Health and Human Services Committee, and a former smoker, I would tell you, it was one of the hardest things that I've ever had to do. But it was one of the greatest accomplishments, is being able to quit smoking and still be breathing. So I just want to thank you all for coming out and just encouraging our, our young people to find something else to do with their time. So maybe if they delay smoking to 21, maybe they'll delay it for life.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to item number one. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the city to grant three temporary construction easements and one permanent drainage easement across certain city-owned land to the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to complete state highway projects. Is there anyone here in favor of item number one? Is there anyone here in favor of item number one? Is there anyone here in favor of item number one? Is there anyone here against item number one? Is there anyone here against item number one? Is there anyone here against item number one? Okay, so we're moving on to item number three. Item number three is an ordinance amending Chapter 28, Article 6, Tree Ordinance of the Municipal Code. Is there anyone here in favor of item number three? Mr. Hale, how are you?
Just fine, thank you. Chairman Sanchez, members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live at 25 Carmel Street in Hartford. And I'm Chair of Hartford's Tree Advisory Commission. It was over 10 years ago when a bunch of people here in Hartford became concerned about the condition of our city forest and began to study what we actually had on our hands. Shortly after that, it became clear that if we were to protect our forest, we needed a stronger and more comprehensive ordinance for that purpose. So we spent a couple of years putting together an ordinance that we felt would do that job. There wasn't much guidance at that time because we looked around the country and there weren't examples of really solid, comprehensive tree ordinances pretty much anywhere. So we really started from scratch, in many cases. We were enthusiastic and ignorant. But we went ahead and, and drafted a tree ordinance, which eventually was adopted by the city council. Since then, we have, several things have occurred. For one, the Tree Commission, Tree Advisory Commission was, was seated and is working. And we've learned where the weaknesses are in that part of the ordinance. We have a brand-new and award-winning new zoning code, which in some cases conflicts with the tree ordinance. We also found that the ordinance was not consistent with other parts of the city code. And it also was not clear how it connected to state statute. So this, this extensive revision is an effort to address those challenges. So for one thing, it, it reconstitutes the commission. It, it maintains the ex-official members, but does not require them to be present for a quorum. We've had a hard time getting quorums sometimes. It has added the potential for two skilled professionals to join the commission who may not live in Hartford. And I will tell you that there are no licensed arborists who live in Hartford, just as an example of why we need to do that. That's, that's the main change to the, or those are the main changes to the makeup of the commission under this revision. It also allows for the ex-official members to appoint representatives instead of attending themselves. We recognize that there are a few other calls for, for attention of those folks. I won't get into any of the other, any of the details on any of the other parts unless you would like me to answer questions. I'm at your service. We did add one additional section to the, to the ordinance, the, the last one, which is based, is focused on public utilities. It requires that public utilities who are doing work that disturbs public trees have to get permission from the city forester before they proceed. It was, it was something that we found really needed to be done in order to protect our precious trees.
Is, I have a question for you. Is that excluding the right-of-way?
Pardon?
Is excluding the right-of-way? Let's say Connecticut Natural Gas has a right-of-way and they have, have a path through one of our parks. Are they required to maintain the trees there or get permission if they're?
Yeah, it's not a requirement for maintenance. It's a requirement for permission. So if they're going to disturb a tree, they need permission first.
Okay.
So typically, this is going to have to do with street trees.
Okay.
There may be some other instances.
We have a question from Councilwoman Winch.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Hale, on Section 28, 160, talks about tree removal. So if I'm a resident who have an overgrown tree that the city planted some, I don't know how many years ago, and that tree is not only uprooting the sidewalk in front of my home, but also the roots of the tree are reaching into my basement, causing me problems, I need to call the city before I can have it removed?
There's no provision in the ordinance or in state statute for trees to be removed under those circumstances. If it's a public tree and it's unhealthy, if it's dangerous, then it is a responsibility of the city forester to see to its removal. But, but that's, that's the extent of her authority.
See, and this is where I have a, this is, through the chair, where I have an issue with it because this is causing, and not causing me problem. I don't have it. But I do have residents who have called me, where they are having these kind of problems with trees. And we're telling them that unless the forester approves the tree that's damaging their home and uprooting the sidewalk, they can't remove the tree.
That's generally true.
But that makes no difference.
If it's a public tree, the city forester is the only person who has authority to see, to have it removed.
Okay, so a follow-up question. So if, if I know that it's a tree that's damaging my home, you won't let me remove the tree, are you also going to be responsible for the damages?
Personally, no.
Okay, but then why can I?
It's actually you, you as city council are the, are where the, where the buck stops.
I'm speaking like the resident. I'm speaking like the resident.
If, if the tree belongs to the city, a case could be made for it needing to be removed. You, as an individual, a resident, and this doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance, but you, as a resident, can't have the opportunity to have a tree pruned so that it is no longer damaging your house?
It's far out of reach that.
I'm sorry?
It says right here in 28, Section 28, 160, "No person shall remove a city tree or on a private property that is within 13 inches or the gruver tree without permit from city forester."
That's correct.
So your tree is damaging my home. I can't remove the tree, but you won't pay for the damages? I mean, the city, I'm the resident.
You can get permission to remove the tree. That, what this says is you can't do it without a permit. If it's, if it's on your property and it's more than 13 inches in diameter, then you do need to get a permit in order to remove it. That's because we've run into situations where people really went crazy and removed a whole lot of trees that had a significant environmental effect. It doesn't say you can't remove it. You just need to talk to the city forester first.
No, it says you must receive, to grant permission to any other person to remove the tree. So if you disagree with me removing the tree, although it's damaging my property, I still can't remove it?
If, so if you want to remove a tree from your property, a tree that's more than 13 inches in diameter, you go to the city forester and ask for a permit to remove it and explain why you need to remove it. If she says no, you can appeal it to the Tree Commission, Tree Advisory Commission. That's also in here. So she, she is the first stop, but she's not the last word.
But she is because the commission, I'm, I'm just going to say this last comment because I don't want to turn it into a committee meeting, Mr. Chairman. But, no, the commission is advisory. So she still has the ultimate say if she wants to take the advice of the commission or not.
No, that's not true. The commission decides. We haven't ever had to do that, but that's where, that's where the buck stops on those, on those cases.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we have one more question from Minority Leader Bermuda.
Thank you. Mr. Hale, thank you for your testimony tonight and for your passion for trees everywhere. So, given that this ordinance has been a collaboration through many different parties, the Tree Commission, Planning and Zoning, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and many others. And given your testimony, now that this ordinance that's before us, its intent is so that there's more cohesion and more transparency and just better implementation all around. Understanding that we have been in a manual deficit in terms of labor for tree removal services and our tree crew, with this ordinance, hypothetically, if we were able to approve this ordinance, would that be, would we be able to be in a position where you would have the full crew available to, based on your conversations with the administration, available so that we could really implement the ordinance in its true effect?
There's nothing in this ordinance that specifies how work gets done, how municipal work gets done. That's a totally separate thing. The work that needs to be done, in some cases, is spelled out here, but actually not. This, this doesn't even talk about the city's liability for dangerous trees, for instance. That all exists in state statute. So, right. This, this doesn't deal with that at all. We're, that's another discussion that's going on right now in a number of different places, but not here.
Recognizing that, my question was more so intended, once we have language in the books and once we have a stronger footing as a city, and in this case, for, for the tree ordinance, we want to make sure that as we move forward with strong language, that there's also parallel, parallel action in terms of response. That was the, where I was leading to, in terms of the question.
I'm totally with you. You're going to see, we are working now on, on budgeting numbers that will be made available to the council and the mayor later in the year that will deal with the costs of maintaining the forest and get down to some pretty fine detail. So you'll hear about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hale.
My pleasure.
Is there anyone here against item number three? Is there anyone here against item number three? Is there anyone here against item number three? Is there anyone here in favor of item number three? Is anyone here in favor of item number three? Is there anyone here in favor of item number three? Okay, item number three has been referred to the Public Works Parks and Environmental Committee. And that committee will be held on the first Wednesday of each month at 5:30 in these chambers. Thank you. Moving on to item number four. Is there anyone here in favor of item number four?
Good evening. My name is Greg Secord. I live at 23 Columbia Street here in Hartford. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Columbia Street and Park Terrace, as you all know, is a unique neighborhood in the city of Hartford. Happens to be the first historic district, local historic district established in the city over 20 years ago. One of the unique characteristics of our neighborhood is that we have some private, privately-owned infrastructure. You may not realize it, but behind the rows on Columbia Street and Park Terrace, there are alleyways. And the alleyways provide off-street parking and also access for trash removal by the city. One of the challenges that we've faced is that because the alleys are privately-owned, there has, it's been a challenge to fund the routine maintenance of the alleys. And we're also challenged with winter snow removal. We do have a volunteer, voluntary program in place, which has worked- We do have a volunteer, voluntary program in place, which has worked okay for the snow removal of the aspect, but frankly, the alleys haven't been, the pavement hasn't been maintained in, to, to my best knowledge, in 25 years. The result is the alleyways need to be replaced. We formed a, a local neighborhood committee to discuss this issue, looking for a solution, and what we determined was that the best, most equitable solution for property owners was to establish a special services district. And that is what the ordinance is before you. The special services district was an, an effort, and we can thank the University of Connecticut, as well as your corporate council office, in drafting the ordinance. And the intent is to provide a vehicle for, in the future, funding the repaving of the alleys and also routine maintenance, as well as snow removal. And, and there's other opportunities potentially for shared infrastructure in that neighborhood. The special service district was modeled after a couple of special service districts here in the city: Park Street, the Downtown Business Improvement District. And so it's a model that we know works, and we look forward to the possibility of, of creating this district and partnering with the city of Hartford to address this ongoing problem and to enhance the George Keller Historic District, the Columbia Street Park Terrace Historic District. I think there's also an opportunity to apply the special service district model in other neighborhoods in, in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here against item number four? Is there anyone here against item number four? Is there anyone here against item number four? Is there anyone here in favor of item number four? Mr. Wolf?
Good evening. My name is James Wolf. I live at 2 Columbia Street. Greg, I think, did a great job covering the topic, but I do want to speak in favor of this. I think it's a great solution to an issue that we're having in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has come together to put this forward, and we really thank the council for taking this up, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here against item number four? Is there anyone here against item number four? Is there anyone here against item number four? Is there anyone here in favor of item number four? Is there anyone here in favor of item number four? Is there anyone here in favor of item number four? Item number four has been referred to the Operation Management Budget and Government Accountability Committee, which is held on the third Monday of each month at 5:30 in these chambers. That concludes the public hearing. Thank you for attending and supporting this evening, and have a good night. Here is adjourned.